Councilmember Nelson.
Here.
Councilmember Thrower.
Here.
All right. Stand for the flag.
Pledge of the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And Bessie Joe has an announcement to make on the agenda.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Council, I distributed to you, in front of you, you have a, an email that went out today at two twenty-four from Bree Zach stating that the McCall Avenue lease tonight for approval will be the original lease. And so it's, and just an assignment, so there's no new lease. It's just the assignment of the existing lease.
Thanks. If we're good with that, can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 And consent agenda, is there anything anyone would like to pull off to discuss for that, or can we get approval?
I move we approve the consent agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
And can we get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Nelson.
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower.
Yes.
Mayor Nielsen.
Yes.
Councilmember Giles.
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek.
Yes.
Okay, into general public comment. We did receive nine written comments today, were distributed this afternoon to everyone, so everyone was able to look through those, mostly pertaining to the McCall Ave. Agenda item. Let me see if we've got. All right, general public comment. We have a few people signed up here. The first one up is a Steve.
Anderson.
Anderson. Steve?
Did you say Steve?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, the public comment.
Part of hearing.
Oh, sorry about that.
Even with hearing aids.
Yeah, if you would like to make a public comment, you can step up to the podium here and give us your name and address and.
I can translate for you.
So I'm speaking to you?
Yeah.
As opposed to?
Yeah, so if you start with your name and address and then you have three minutes.
My name is Steve Anderson, and I live at fifteen fifty-five McCall Avenue in McCall.
Yeah.
And I've been here now for going on two and a half years. I've been visiting McCall for about twenty years and Idaho with my family being in residence for a couple of years while my daughter-in-law was in residence at the medical center in Boise. And my son was working with Ridgeston Rivers and ski instructor and ski patrolman. He's currently a commercial pilot here in town. My daughter-in-law is a physician. And my grandkids, all of whom are the reason for my being here. I'm going on eighty-four. And the idea was that if I moved when I did, I could do it mostly myself. And if I waited much longer, I'd miss my granddaughters being kids. So it's, it's worked out really well. Had a hard time finding a house, but by far the, the favorite one for me and for everybody, frankly. And two of my three sons helped in buying the house along with me. What to say? It was the workforce housing that made it possible. Housing in McCall is extremely expensive. And I know that's another subject, but I, I think something has to be done nationally and locally to make housing more compact and, and more affordable and thinking on a different wavelength than we're doing right now. I love my neighborhood. I love my neighbors. I love being so close to the lake where I can paddleboard and canoe and kayak and. If it were coming to pass that this new version, is that what the V stands for? Version, version? If, if Virgin Three passes, or if I was coming at that time, I, I wouldn't qualify. And I'm, I'm certainly glad that I'm in, but I'm assuming that I won't sell the house. And I will be dead and gone more than likely, and my sons will deal with disposing of the house. And if that three version comes in, of course, it'll be a, do I have a choice, or do they have a choice of V two or V three, or no? If, if it comes to pass down the road, I'm assuming I'm going to be around for a little while. Anyway, i- if it, if it happens that they have the V three, it'll be not as good for them financially as selling the house under V two.
That's your three minutes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, up next we have Amanda Caveney signed up.
Thank you, Mayor, city councilmembers, city staff, and neighbors. My name's Amanda Caveney. My husband and I own fifteen sixty-three McCall Avenue on lot ten. And I want to emphasize our sincere appreciation for the McCall Avenue workforce housing. It has been exceptional. And we are so incredibly blessed to have the village that surrounds us. My comments tonight relate directly to agenda item AB twenty-six zero nine-two, which proposes execution of a new ground lease with a prospective home buyer. We are just made aware that it's no longer version three as the action item and instead version two, so I'll try to hone it in a little. At the special meeting held on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-six, a more restrictive lease, commonly referred to as version three, was introduced. And although it's not on the docket tonight, I imagine that's what's coming in the future. While city staff have reassured existing homeowners that version three is voluntary and does not affect current leases, that reassurance does not reflect how precedent operates, nor what we're experiencing in practice. The proposal of version three coincides with a shift in how version two compliance began to be interpreted and enforced. This is why concerns were first raised in October of twenty twenty-five directly with city staff, with new administrative practices appeared, when new administrative practices appeared to conflict with the lease language. I want to be clear about two points this evening. First, as owners of a home on lot ten, if and when we sell our home, we would not encourage a buyer to adopt a more restrictive lease. Second, and more importantly, what you guys have done is amazing. McCall Avenue is an anomaly, and it's a beautiful anomaly. We have a village. We have a community. We have undeniable resiliency in our neighborhood. And that is thanks to you guys, your initiatives and the works that's been done over twenty years. I, I applaud you guys for that. What we're asking for council's guidance is to ensure that staff apply the lease as written. Again, I'm going to emphasize this because our, our future and how we are thriving right now is because we're able to own our home. And it's that pride of ownership. And it's a village, and families have put down roots. We've raised our children. And we've been through joy and hardship together. There's a level of trust and reliability that allows kids to run freely beha- between homes. And you can televise my snack cupboard which house gets hit the hardest which week. We celebrate new babies and new jobs. We show up during job transitions, emergencies, and loss. Neighbors have stepped in without hesitation. You guys, the program's thriving. We're nurses, we're therapists, we're tradespeople, we're grocery workers, we're Idaho power employees, we're physicians, we're grandparents, we're retirees, we're students. And there's young children. I'm a first responder and people who keep McCall running and are proud to live where they serve. And much of that service and volunteer is unrecorded. It's not tracked, you guys. It's McCall. We just step in when we have to, and that's how it goes. And you're not going to be able to quantify it. I hear that's my timing, timer, Bessie Joe. I'll wrap it up. I, my last point, and thank you for bearing with me. I am a strong believer and participant in the ground lease model. The success of McCall Avenue is rooted in pride of ownership. That pride was not built on taxpayer dollars, but through personal sacrifices. Homeowners have invested their life savings, their personal budgets to maintain and improve their homes. In the last five years, we're talking roofs, siding, painting, updating floors, and caring for properties because ownership fosters stewardship. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Thanks, Amanda. Right, up next we have Diane Miller.
Good evening. I second all the things that Amanda said about the neighborhood. It's an awesome neighborhood.
Please state your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Diane Miller, fifteen thirty-one McCall Avenue. I bought the house back in September of two thousand nine, longest tenure on the street. And bought the house because in-law lived in town, spouse worked here during her growing up, grandmother had a cabin, so a lot of history. And, and we were blessed because two thousand nine, as you guys said last week at the meeting, version one was revised so that version two, it could be a secondary home. So we bought it as a secondary home. For the first eleven years, I gladly played, paid the subsidy. COVID hit, and my position was turned to a remote position. And then McCall became our primary home. I still own a home in Boise, but it's a secondary home. This is our primary home. And, and because it's our primary home, I worked here full-time. Ju- April of twenty-three, I was able to retire and still lived here. This is my primary home. And we have family all over the country. We travel a lot. And, and we're blessed. I'm, I'm very healthy, made good financial decisions, so this has worked well for us. Version three, I have many concerns with. And, and it feels like the template for version three was based on my experience of what I've been dealing with since September of twenty twenty-five. The tax return, the homestead exemption, the, it says other evidence of residency. These statements are so vague. It, it's just not fair to future home buyers that, that these statements would be in there because it leaves the latitude for people to request things that they had no idea were going to be requested. Another big concern I have is resale because version three is so vague. And, and it, it, there's a statement that says additional documentation may be requested to verify accuracy. Who the heck knows what that means? And, and like for myself, right now, I had to get two neighbors to give me affidavits that I lived there, that, that that's my primary residence. How, really? To put my neighbors in that place? Not fair. So I, I personally would not voluntarily accept version three. And because it's not fair to future purchasers for me to do that. They need to be able to decide which version works best for them in their situation. So, thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Next we have Dave Reese.
Hello, I'm Dave Reese, fifteen forty-seven McCall Avenue. After, you know, sitting in the meeting last week on, you know, online and reviewing some of the stuff, I am, I would be, well, not hesitant. I wouldn't go forward and sign or even push a buyer if we were ever sell the house to go to that version three. It's definitely more restrictive. And, oh, you're fine. And then I know even talking to some, you know, lenders, things like that, the more restrictive the controls are, the harder it is to get the loan. And when I bought the house, what, two years ago? I, you know, I was fully, it went through city council. I worked for Idaho Power. And I've been doing it for twenty-five years. We moved up here simply because I, you know, Boise is just too much now. I mean, I'm Idaho native. I grew up here. We were up here every weekend anyways, skiing and doing all sorts of stuff. So we ended up buying here, and part of that, you know, in order to actually make it work, because, you know, how, homes are expensive. This was a house we could afford. And part of that piece was knowing that, okay, that dollar a year would work because that's just how it is. Well, now, I am told I don't qualify because I don't work for a business that services McCall, which I completely, so McCall doesn't use power. They don't care about power. I don't know. But I'm told that I don't service McCall. I work for a business that does it. We have the Gold Fork Office. We have regions everywhere. I do have the ability to work remote, and it's not all the time, but I can work at multiple locations. Part of that is because of my job, I'm in cybersecurity. I have to go where incidents are. I have to do things. We're hit all the time, so it's, it's important to do what I do, and it's critical to the business. So being told that I no longer qualify just doesn't make sense when nothing has changed. It's my job. I've done it twenty-five years. Now I don't qualify. It just doesn't make sense to me. And knowing that and going with version three, and there's the callouts for the remote, more, the remote work pieces, things like that. It's like, okay, well, I can't think of anyone that's not doing some form of remote work anymore. So it makes it a little difficult to understand some of the restrictions that are being put in place. And I know even some of the references last week where, you know, Blaine County and Aspen. Okay, we are not a, a huge resort town. We don't have tons of money coming in, in here for these people doing things. I can do remote work. Doesn't mean that I'm making a ton of money. Idaho Power's not that big. We don't pay a lot. So, I mean, it is what it is. Plus, I have my own personal business here that's a cybersecurity LLC, and I do stuff here as well. So I just don't understand why I don't qualify, and I just have concerns moving forward with a more strict version in the future. So that's what I have.
Thank you, Steve.
Yep.
Steve Kavini.
Could I, my name is Steve Kavini. I live at one five six three McCall Avenue in McCall, Idaho, eight three six three eight. Can I ask a question for clarity? There is no vote on approving version three of the lease this evening. This is just to transfer the existing version two to the new owner. Is that right?
Correct.
So it seems like we brought a gun to a knife fight or something like that. So at least you guys have some opinions moving forward if V three should be introduced again. And it honestly, it could be interested, introduced again. I think the spirit of it is great. I think that the need for housing in this town is very real. Everybody knows it. Everybody can sense it. And I hope that we can have more programs. I hope we could somehow build another nine houses, just like McCall Avenue. And whether that's under the version two lease or something that is more like fitting with the vision of the housing staff. And I think that I want to commend you guys for, like, I feel like this was kind of a test on what Mike was talking about last week. Well, is it voluntary or not? Because if you're not going to approve it under V two, so tonight will be a test of that, whether or not a proof of concept that yes, the version two lease could in fact be passed on to a new buyer in its current form. Does that make sense? So I, yes, thank you, Bree, for following through with that, which seemed to be made clear last week. And thank you, council, for all your good questions last week. I think you guys took a look at something that could have been very simple and asked some really good questions around it. And I also feel like this is maybe a little bit rushed to try to meet the timeline of the sale of that house. And this will at least provide more time to iron out the details and get some of the specifics that I think some of the council members were looking for. And if this version is to be amended in transfer of sales or by voluntary status or something else in the future, that it can be solid in that form. So there's not a version four, a version five, or whatever. That is all. Thank you very much, everybody, for what you do.
Logan Bonnison.
I didn't have time to print, so I brought this. Logan Bonnison, fifteen thirty-nine McCall Avenue. Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to us tonight. I'm here to talk about our experience from October through December, about whether we would receive the housing subsidy or whether we would have to pay the rent, which would have amounted to just about, just under eight hundred dollars a month. For those of you who may not know, my wife Jessica's been a nurse at St. Luke's in McCall for over a decade and is only working part-time currently, so she can be at home with our five-year-old and one-year-old daughters. I want to be clear, because I'm sure you all know of our situation, that it is not our wish at all to have an adversarial relationship with the city or its staff. We only resorted to bringing in legal counsel because we were given no other option to pursue a mutual agreement. We were told if we wanted to escalate our concerns, we would have to convince the city council to amend the lease to accommodate us. In the meantime, we were told we owed eight hundred dollars by the end of the month. When given no other recourse, we had to involve legal counsel in order to continue living in McCall. That's not hyperbole or exaggeration. Our first seven and a half years participating in this local housing program were great, and we had no issues or problems at all. The previous four months, however, have been, in a word, awful. To be so randomly disregarded and disrespected was shocking and distressing. We began our communications about this in an open, honest, transparent manner, acting in good faith, and that turned out to be a huge mistake. If we had only relayed Jessica's situation, we might have been given some leeway. However, as soon as we made known that I was working remotely for a Seattle tech company, no less, it felt like we had a target on our back. To be told that we've outgrown the program without acknowledgement of the impossibly expensive housing situation in McCall is incredibly aggravating. To have it implied that we are somehow not deserving to live in our home because Jessica decided to work part-time so she could be home with our young girls is utterly infuriating. To be told that Jessica should return to work instead of raising her children is unacceptable and an outrage. We felt unheard, disrespected, and our concerns and situation completely ignored. The justifications and correspondence we received were often belittling and condescending, and the overall message we did receive was loud and clear. You can't raise a family on McCall Avenue without risking your home. To reiterate, we were given no other options to resolve this issue. We were not told you can talk to this person, or you should meet with that person. We were told that we can try and convince the city council to amend the lease, which is obviously unlikely, and we were told to pay up. The dismay over our experience is over and in the past, but I am here tonight because I don't want any other young families to go through the same ordeal that we have. The comments and questions about the McCall Ave housing program from city council members during last week's meeting were very encouraging and appreciated. We are grateful to have city council members so dedicated to the best interests of our community, so thank you.
Thanks, Logan. Jessica Bonnison, if you want to speak.
Hi, my name is Jessica, and I live on fifteen thirty-nine McCall Avenue. I'm just going to give you a little story of our family as to why we would oppose the amended lease, V three. I think it's too restrictive. I don't think we should limit remote workers from buying one of these homes. If anything, it needs to be less restrictive and more inclusive. I don't think there should be a minimum number of hours worked. And there should be something to include a parent taking care of their child or children at home and/or a caregiver taking care of someone requiring assistance, for example, an aging parent, someone with an illness requiring in-home care. So I kind of want to think we should look at expanding the, the lease to more people who have different situations going on in their life. Logan working remote in his career that fulfills him allows me to continue working at the hospital. If he cannot do his job remotely, we would have had to move, and I would no longer be able to work at St. Luke's. Him working remotely keeps us in this community. He has worked for St. Luke's and Sherlodge, but both places did not offer growth for him financially and professionally. And with this new job, he can't do greater things for our family and, you know, his career. And then obviously, I, yeah, I work part-time because I can finally be home with my two girls at home, which is huge because I took care of my family and my husband while he went back to school. I worked really hard. He worked really hard, and it took us years to get to this point. Yeah, I have a one-year-old and a now five-year-old, and I'm trying my best to get to be home with them part-time. And I still work at the hospital part-time because that's important to me. I've given, yeah, more than a decade to this hospital, working on call, responding to surgeries emergently. I'm very much integrated in the hospital and in the community, and I plan to keep doing so, just as a part-time basis. So another thing, part of the release being too restrictive is saying I need to work at least fifteen hundred hours a year. I mean, I think being a parent, being a mom or a dad, you should be able to choose to be home with your children as, and that should be considered, working, living in McCall full-time. We're full-time residents. We take our kids to ballet, dance class, ski lessons, daycare. Yeah, to be seen as that we're not part of this community and we shouldn't live in our house was hard to hear. But we are very grateful for the housing program because it did allow us to buy our first home when we really had no money to our name, when we were brand-new here, just starting our lives. So we are grateful for the program. And now we are growing, and hopefully we can keep making new opportunities for ourselves. I totally didn't look at what I was reading. Anyhow, just I want more thought and time into this amended lease, just so we can make it opportunistic for future families. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, that rounds up our public comment for people who've signed up. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a general public comment tonight? No? No one online? Okay.
May I make a comment?
Yeah.
The fact that all of you folks showed up and said what you said means a lot to us. I think I'm speaking for everybody here. Public comment means a lot to city council here, a lot. And I think the heartfelt way in which each of you spoke and shared with us your experiences and your thoughts is nothing short of significant and is greatly appreciated. So thank you for coming and everything that we heard. So thank you uh for coming and everything that we heard we will take into consideration.
Thanks, Mike.
If I may, please, with all of us to speak.
Appreciate it. I share the sentiment.
Council member Nielsen, can I say something also?
Sure. I just want to say from the perspective of the city staff that I, I think that part of the, the process here that has generated this comment is the fact that cities, city staff are now running a housing program and policies that look a lot different than the program that was set up for McCall Avenue. So I think part of the difficulty um that's, that's creating this, these differing perceptions is the effort to try and reconcile two very different housing programs. So I think it's, you know, that's, I think fundamentally, that's kind of where some of this stems from. If you look at the current housing program, it, it doesn't allow things like remote work, and it is actually much more restrictive than um what is um uh what the McCall Avenue leases can accommodate. So I, I think that that's just important to understand for perspective. Where, where it goes from here, I think that that's, you know, it's something that city staff probably has to go back and reexamine what's reasonable and with council's guidance and input on what they think is fair and right for the community.
Thanks, Forrest. Yeah, I think we are, the journey continues. Um, and your input is valued, so I think as our discussions continue on how we can provide local housing, definitely be considered into the future, so. Let's uh.
Mayor, may I, may I just make one point one back?
Okay.
Every, every house is represented. The only homeowner that is not here is watching all of the kids.
Thank you. It's a great, great neighborhood. Okay, um, the next up on our agenda is a presentation for our outgoing mayor. Forrest would like to uh start this out.
Thanks, Mayor Nielsen. I'll, I'll just speak briefly on behalf of city staff and myself. So we um thought that it would, would be important as um council member Giles passed the baton over to Colby Nielsen to take over the, the mayoral duties for council after six years to um recognize and acknowledge the six years that uh Bob Giles was in that role. Um, in addition to the four years that he was on council as a council member before that. Um, a lot of um issues and discussions have gone before council and the community in those ten years and in the six years that uh Bob was leading council as mayor. So I think it's fitting to recognize and acknowledge that and express some appreciation. And just for me personally, I've been in this job as city manager for little over a year, and I was deeply grateful for Bob's presence and guidance and his um the, the many chats that we had in city hall. Um, him giving me perspective and guidance on the, the substance and the context of the various issues that the city was dealing with. Um, it, policy and operation-wise, Bob presided over council during a lot of pretty um uh momentous uh times that the city faced going through the COVID pandemic, uh getting the water bond approved by the voters, renewing the law of authority last year. And he was deeply involved in all those uh issues and driving those policies forward with council and then also working with city staff. And I know that on behalf of those of us in city hall that we always enjoyed having Bob come in for his weekly meetings and when he was around to sign checks and have those chats. And then just also acknowledging his um, his deep connection to the community and how active he was, and that I'm sure he'll continue to be um going forward as he continues to serve on council. But all the events, the city's um volunteer appreciation day, Fourth of July Arbor Day, um, uh, winter carnival, all those things, you could count on Bob to show up. The, the American Legion's Veterans Day event. Um, and then in addition to that, I've spent a lot of time with Bob even outside of McCall, going to um discussions in the Capitol about short-term rental issues um with our uh counterparts from other resort cities. So really have valued your um council and the wisdom that you've passed on to me, Bob, so thanks a lot.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks for your kind words.
Thanks, Forrest.
And then Mayor Nielsen has some words on behalf of council.
Um, I, I don't know if I want to speak for the entire council. I do have things to say, but I would like to give you guys all an opportunity to say something if you want.
I know Lyle always wants to say something, so go for it.
Yeah, there's something like a, a, an order of progress. I usually get the, start the line goes this way. Uh, yeah, I have a great deal of admiration and respect for Bob uh for the things that Forrest mentioned, insight to how, what makes this community work well. I think the getting us through things, the, the library is a challenge, uh engaging the community. And um you've done an outstanding job. Uh, I'm so glad that you took that on uh for the time that you did. And, and I think people should know that, you know, we, we uh have all of us that regard for, for Bob. And it, it is going to be a lasting, Bob will always be Mayor Bob to me. I know, so I'm happy to call Kobe mayor. And, you know, we share that honor. It is an honor, happy to share it. But in the back of my mind, when I see Bob, I'm just going, there's Mayor Bob. He's out there doing that ten thousand steps to make another thousand bucks for the city. That was a contest, right? Bob had walked. And uh there were some cold mornings when he looked tired and he, and he put out for this city. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, Bob, um, I just wanted to say thank you for your service. Um, I know you put in a tremendous amount of extra time outside of city council on all the events that Forrest mentioned. I mean, it's, it's uh, you know, only you know all of them, I'm sure. Um, so we really appreciate that. I think you've served the city well and you've represented the city well and all these things. Um, I, I really appreciate uh your leadership here on council. We've had some really contentious meetings uh in the four years, especially the last two years that I've been, uh, well, I've been on four years. Um, but the last two years, we've had some big projects. We've had some, you know, um decisions where we uh all didn't agree on. Um, and you handled those meetings really well. And I think, um, you know, your leadership uh kind of instilled a uh respect for, uh, all of us respect each other's and each other's opinions, even though they're different, even though we disagree. But I think, um, you know, the way you handle our meetings and handle those kinds of difficulties, um, you know, spread down to us in terms of us respecting each other's opinions and working together as a council. Um, I think you've really instilled uh the respect of the community. You've uh instilled respect in, in us in terms of um you know, just that, that the community matters, the comments, public comments matter. You, you never let that go, even if, you know, even on these contentious issues, even though we have, you know, comments from, on, on both sides opposing something, you know, uh approving something. You made sure that every person that was here was heard, um, was respected. And I think that's great. That doesn't happen in our, in our um community a lot, so.
Thank you, Julie. Appreciate it.
I'll let you go last. I, I can be brief. Two things. One, you have shown up time and time again, but more importantly, I, I would say this to anybody, and this is the most important one, is that you have listened and you listen. And so thank you for that.
You bet. Thank you. Mayor Bob? Always going to be Mayor Bob, for sure.
Ross, off the table nicely, too.
You've uh, the years that we've served together up to this point, really have been an inspiration to serve with. I can't say it any better than anyone else has said it, like, all I know is I have some big shoes to fill. And I'm very happy to know that you're still serving on council. So when things get tough, I will come and ask you some questions. For the guidance, because I'm always impressed of how you can navigate some challenging situations.
Thank you.
I hope I can do that as well. So um we have gotten you a token of our appreciation, and I think we need a picture. So can we come up here and present others' air?
That is really cool, man.
I know Julie's going to be jealous of this. She's.
Well, well, you can't, you can't use it, though. Colby is just going to miss a meeting. I'll have my turn.
In honor of the, the years that you've served as mayor, we'd like to present you this plaque. And so much appreciation from Mayor, thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone, for the kind words. It's overwhelming, and I really appreciate it.
Okay.
Also, Bob, just for your awareness, for anybody in the community that doesn't watch this meeting and see how much everybody appreciates you, there, there will be a viewpoint in the newspaper next week to, to kind of um just uh make sure everybody is aware of the contribution that you've made, yeah.
Well, thank you to all the staff and council members. It means a lot. I appreciate the kind words. I'm looking forward to serving for these next four years as a, as a member of council. Thanks for making me feel welcome.
Okay. Um, next up, we are getting into some reports uh from the airport advisory committee. Emily, do you want to introduce Mike or just you?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Mayor Bob, I want to thank you very much. Um, I'm introducing Mike Weiss. He's the chair of our airport advisory committee. He's going to provide you with our annual report from the airport. Thank you.
I'm Mike Weiss. I'm the chair of the airport advisory committee. As Emily said, I live at forty-seven Pearson Lane in McCall. I lived here full-time about seventeen years and been coming up here about forty years. Before I say anything else, I just want to express on behalf of the advisory committee our appreciation of Emily. She is an outstanding airport manager, as I'm sure you are all aware. And she, working with pilots is not the easiest thing in the world, let me assure you. And Emily does a fabulous job, and she just did a great job at the airport. She's achieved additional accreditations um that are very unusual for an airport of her size. So she's just terrific. So there are so many cool things that have happened at the airport this year that I'm not going to go through all of them. Would take much too long. I just want to point out a couple of them. The first one, and perhaps the coolest, was our open house on uh the first day of summer. And it was cool because it slated about two inches at the airport. They were able to build a snowman on the side of the runway. It uh did deter our, some of our fly-ins. And in spite of that, we were able to have, it was the theme this year was the eightieth anniversary of the end of World War Two. And um we had a warbird come in and do a flyby. Uh, we missed out on having uh many of our anticipated uh antique aircraft fly-in. In spite of that, we had a real good attendance. The raffle, which benefits the scholarship fund for kids in, in our local high school in aviation, uh, went off very well, raised quite a bit of money, just almost a record. And um the uh food truck did well, too. It went really well. We had appropriate talks and they were well-attended, and I think everybody had a good time, despite the fact it was very cold and wet. The um Beaver Drop, which is our signature event, uh went well. And if you know about that, if you don't, you should find out about it. If you have any grandkids, bring them. The kids go nuts about it. They have to pick where the beaver lands. It's not a real beaver, and it was dressed in an appropriate vintage flight suit, which I don't know. I didn't realize there were like beaver flight suits online for stuffed animals, and apparently there are. And uh he landed, the little boy who won it was incredibly cute. And, and we had to have the airport engineer go out there with GPS and identify the exact spot where it landed because the kids are very attentive about this. Just a lot of fun. We haven't set a theme for this coming year, but it should be, it's the one-hundredth anniversary of Varney Aviation, which flew from Walla Walla to Elko through Idaho and was the beginning of United Airlines. So that's coming up. Uh, second thing, small hangar development. Um, as you know, there is a real shortage of hangar space at the McCall Airport. It's not a great place to leave your plane out on the ramp during the winter. So you really have to find a place. I, I'm not quite sure what our waiting list is, but it's way in excess of fifty. And we are going to have seventeen new hangars, again, thanks to Emily's diligent work on this area. Uh, we've gotten the uh infrastructure issues ironed out. We have a contractor planning, Falvey's, planning on building them. Should have seventeen new hangars, hopefully by the end of next year. That, as long as I have been coming to McCall, forty years, we've been talking about this. So this is quite an achievement. And then um finally, and I think most important, was a hearing at Valley County P and Z a couple of weeks ago. I don't know if you heard about this. There was a, a proposal to build a campground on the approach end of McCall Airport landing to the north. Uh, this would have interfered with our instrument approach. The, McCall is able to accommodate airplanes when it's overcast, when the weather's not great, through what's called an instrument approach. And um we are the only one in Valley County. The next nearest one is Weezer, okay? And this doesn't serve our, just our jet traffic, but it also serves like liflight. Um, and um the way that works is that if you build an obstruction, it doesn't immediately end instrument approach. The FAA surveys all the instrument approaches on a regular basis, and if they don't like it, they just stop it. They publish that it's not approved and we are out of business. And then we have to go through all the rigmarole to get it back and stated. It would have been a real disaster to have this approved. Many people, including Emily and other interested people at the airport, spoke against it. And thank goodness, it was defeated unanimously. So our instrument approach remains, but we have to guard that because there's a lot of development around here, as you know. And any of that might impact the, what they call navigation area, the, the approach into McCall uh to meet the criteria the FAA requires. Uh, and there's no other, there's no other airport in Valley County that could even potentially meet that. So we are fortunate to have it, and we merely need to guard it. And uh that's really why I wanted to, to ring up. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them for you.
One real quick question.
Sure.
What's the name of the company that flew from Walla Walla south?
Varney Aviation.
Uh, V A R.
N E Y, yeah. And it became, when it united with other airlines, it became United Airlines, yeah.
That's a great story, so we should have a good turnout for that.
I'm hoping to get United Airlines to send somebody and talk about it, maybe even give us some financial aid.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Thanks. Thank you, Mike. And the, the item that you talked about, the campground, was not approved, is that?
Yes, unanimously was not approved. And it would have potentially taken away our instrument approach in here.
Which would have been where?
What's that?
Where was the location?
You know the, the yurt on the, on the south end of the airport, kind of southeast? That's where it was.
Okay.
Very close. You have to maintain a certain glide slope and open area. We, we almost, we had to have trees taken down. They were a couple inches too high. I mean, they're very specific about what the requirements are, which is a nice thing to know if you're flying out on, on a, a liflight. So um anyway, it's, it's something that we need to protect it. And they don't, you know, you can't like apply and have them look at it. You have to meet their criteria, and they can just shut it down. Okay, great.
Thank you for the great.
Thanks a lot for your attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
See, the next up on our agenda is an item that is going to get moved to another date. It was the public hearing for the Paylakes Middle School.
Yes.
Do you wanna make a comment on that?
Sure. Greetings, good evening, mayor and council. Meredith Todd, City and Sustainability Planner. We had attempted to public notice for the CUP for the middle school tonight, but there was a mailing error that was brought to my attention about forty-eight hours ago. So while you all did your homework and read all of those materials and came prepared for class today, you fortunately get another four weeks to review. And we will try to re-notice that public hearing for February twenty-sixth. That's the next possible meeting that we can bring that forward for, with an updated mailing list that will hopefully get where it needs to go. So, check. I'm efficient.
But don't go anywhere, because there's more. We do have another public hearing on the agenda. And this is a request to consider the approval of an application to vacate East Diamond Street. So I guess the first thing we need to do is have a motion to open the public hearing. Move to open the public hearing.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to open the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. Meredith, can you?
Yes.
Take us away?
Yes. So in your packet, you have an agenda bill that describes the procedural history. We visited the McCall Area Planning and Zoning Commission, now known as the McCall City Planning and Zoning Commission, back in October. And there was a recommendation for approval of this request to vacate the easterly segment of Diamond Street. So that would be to the lookers right as you're driving into Ponderosa State Park. There is no road there. It is effectively a goat path or maybe a four-wheeler path if you're lucky. You cannot drive a Prius down it, I have tried. So the applicant is in the room tonight, Mr. Russell, I'm going to butcher your last name as I always do, Schermeier, I hope. And so this application is essentially to facilitate the development of two parcels that he holds on the back end that he would like to combine and then build across and access via the vacated right-of-way. As opposed to vacating the right-of-way and providing the half segments to each of the adjacent property owners, this one would be vacated in favor of a private roadway. So it would be a parcel that becomes under shared ownership of a road maintenance association or a road owners association. And the affidavits of legal interest, as well as the draft road maintenance agreement for how that would be administered, have been submitted. We did want to allow the opportunity for the applicant to present the concept to council and consider it before sending surveyors out to do additional work and engineers out to do additional design work, given that vacation is a discretionary action of the council before spending all those additional dollars on finalizing documents. So I'm happy to answer any questions after you take some presentation from the applicant. In general, from a details perspective, this, this road area that's being vacated doesn't go to any future road extension. The further section of East Diamond had already been vacated probably twenty-five to thirty years ago and has alternative access into the Strawberry Conifer neighborhood over to further east. But all of the pedestrian access opportunities would remain available via dedication to public use that would still exist within a private roadway into the future. So we don't have any major concerns with not being able to access it for bicyclists if we were to establish a pedestrian network in that direction. But there's no master planned use of it from a public perspective at this point. No capital improvement plan to develop a below standards public road at this point. And so we, we feel at the staff level that it is one of those rare cases of sensical vacation of a public right-of-way at this point. So, I can stand for any questions, and you have Russell here to speak with you as well.
Vacating it to become a private roadway?
Dedicated to public use.
We all understand the, what private road means, and the applicant and other parties. All get private road, doesn't mean private gate, private nobody can use, exclusive use. Private road means that the city is not maintaining it.
Correct.
Any other questions?
And following on Mike's point of view, what is the distinguish of that between, between the, how I characterize it, and a driveway? Is, those are two land use differentiations?
So, we tried to test the driveway theory on this one before we recommended the process of vacation. Essentially, the city code prohibits more than two parcels or five parcels of a certain size from utilizing a shared driveway before it has to be built to some kind of roadway standard. The minimum width for a public roadway in McCall is sixty feet. This right-of-way is only forty. So in that case, we recommended, if you vacate this current undersized right-of-way that we cannot develop to a public standard, working with the city engineer's office, we can develop a private below public road standard that can meet a private road standard, but function as a driveway. So it would, it would be a road, but it acts like a driveway. Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
And so that's why it's called a shared driveway agreement.
We'll probably change that language in the revision process to make it actually act like a roadway.
I did have a question about that agreement. It talks about shared portion of the driveway and certain parcels, or the parcels owning other portions up to the border or something like that? Sorry, I'm trying to find the language, but if you kind of know what I'm talking about.
Yeah, I remember that segment came in before, we'd spoken with Bill's office about vacating in favor of a private roadway parcel. So that had been when this draft agreement was arranged on everyone receiving a quarter section of the vacated area. And then in learning, we can actually vacate it in favor of a parcel that is just shared by everyone, that language would be eliminated in a revised version.
And everybody else around that, their access, they've all been noticed?
Yep.
Everybody within three hundred feet of that piece has been noticed? Their accesses are all established via either Diamond or that extension of Diamond or they're accessed off Davis or Lake Creek or, everything's vetted out?
Correct. Yeah, the one comment that we got at the Planning and Zoning Commission level that I think I mentioned in the staff report from a Herschel Walker, discussed the importance of, of the public and utilities being able to continue use of that now private roadway in the event that a power line fell down or any snow landed on objects, because he finds himself going back there each year to knock some things around if the power goes out in that segment of the neighborhood. So there would be utility undergrounding as a part of that private roadway reconstruction, but everything would remain accessible and probably be more accessible as improved by the applicant.
So if David Kirsner were to want to develop that larger parcel they have, they would be able to get access via that if they needed?
Yes, they could get this or they have access via Davis, or sorry, Lake Creek, the Lake Creek side. They could even do both.
Meredith? In the packet? I'm not questioning whether or not you vetted everything out, I just want to double check.
Yep, you're good.
I had a follow-up question to Mike's. And in the packet, there was some talk about the importance of not having any meters in the, in the right-of-way or, well, the pavement area, along the surface broadly. So that's been all thought through and coordinated?
Yeah, that'll be finally vetted during final engineering design. We have probably a, oh, I don't know, I can't, can't describe the percentile of engineering design, because I'll get it wrong. But we have a preliminary design that shows where the existing utilities would be moved to in that construction process. And I believe the city engineer's office is still determining, should that meter for the one house that would be back there and served via a service line under there be out by Davis? Or should it be way down on the end of the vacated roadway? So locations of those in a final standpoint aren't quite determined, but they will be before any permits or finalization of a vacation are issued.
Thank you.
Yes. Oh, and I should mention, if anyone ever got ambitious enough to design a connected roadway off the end of this, I think it's built flexibly enough and designed flexibly enough that if, for example, Mr. Kissner, close to that, if he wanted to connect it to either Lake Creek or, I can't remember if it's Strawberry or Conifer, up to the northeast, there's a giant creek bed that would require a bridge crossing, but the allowance for public access down this segment would allow for connectivity in the future if that property owner wanted to develop to a larger extent. So, it would have to be a private roadway that connects it, but that option remains there.
And so the benefit to the applicant is to do this is to be able to improve it for their, access to their property?
Yep.
And all the people notified, none of them feel that this in any way impairs their access? There's just one lot, when I look in there, it looks like this kind of boxed in.
Yeah.
But...
I might allow the applicant to speak to that, because I believe there's even family ties involved. But I think a lot of people think it'll improve their ability to approach their own properties back there at this point.
Would you guys like to hear from the applicant?
I would.
Yeah? Mr. Schermeier, would you wanna come up and tell us about this local housing development you're gonna provide?
Well, my name is Russell Schermeier, I'm from Bruno, Idaho, Mormon Boulevard, two nine six three two. Appreciate your time and effort, really appreciate the time and effort that I've got from the staff. We are, as she, as she said, this has been a family lot on my wife's side. They've been there since nineteen fifty-eight and built a cabin there. I think since then, the wheel of time has moved on, as those kind of cabins do. And we were able to buy the two lots kind of back buried behind that are off of that Diamond Street. When we got them, we weren't quite, didn't know that the road was not up to, up to snuff when we put our application in. And so it kind of started with a, we put our building application in and then it kind of backdrafted, how do we get to it? On the, the lot that you're talking about, that is my father-in-law and mother-in-law, they have a little summer cabin there. So we have a very good relationship. I'm, I'm a farmer, I, I know how it is working. I, I plan to be, you know, a good neighbor is the biggest thing I have. So everybody we've talked to, I've tried to make sure that everything we're doing is beneficial to everybody as we're moving forward with this. So, you know, looking for a future, for anybody that needs to do anything in the future, I think this is going to be helpful. We're putting in a cabin, I've got three daughters, we spend a lot of time up here in the winter. I was just skiing today, because I had to come up to this meeting, but, and, and we hope to be up here a lot more in the winter as we farm in the summer and kind of have that offset. But looking for a winter cabin. The use of this road, I think will, as she mentioned, it's not roadworthy right now. My father-in-law and, or mother-in-law kind of drive back in there as it goes. It's a borderline hazard now, if something happened, there's no way to get anything in and out to where they are now. So I think it's an updating process that would be helpful for them where they're at. They're very on board with everything and allowing us to kind of put a cabin back in there too. There's two other lots out in front on the right there. Talked to both of them and, you know, we're very good relationship with them of how can we build this so that it's beneficial for you in the future? Again, it's kind of a, it's pretty inaccessible now. The roadway is drivable and it has been there since the sixties. We've got pictures of it and their family photo of every car since then that's been back there with the deer on the hood. It's worked very well for what it is, but you know, I think that updating, just for kind of the safety factor, is kind of what we're looking for so that we could use it for more of a winter aspect. So that's, that's kind of our motivation. We're not trying to develop anything, we're trying to put in a family cabin that, you know, I can grow old in and my daughters can hang out with me too. And we can watch over our father-in-law on the other side as he tinkers around. So that's kind of our goal. And just really appreciate the help we've had. It's been a, I think we've been at it for two years now, so, and you know, that for us, frustrating to not be able to jump on it right away, but luckily, the ag market took a dump, so we were kind of easy to just kind of hold back as that kind of gave time to, give us time to get our footing on, get the plans together for everything. So, we're really excited to be part of the community and be able to help out and do this right so that everybody in the area is benefiting from it.
Any questions for the applicant?
None for me.
None for me.
Thanks for your persistence.
Meredith, if we could have you come back up just real quickly. I think the, a really important thing I got out of your discussion with us tonight, your presentation and in the packet, is a key point for me where all of the owners of lots that access off of that road, McCall Road, private road, they're all buying in, literally. They own property and so there's a lot of incentive to cooperate on the cost and do all the things, which makes it more realistic and not adversarial. So that was really brilliant, that you came up with that, both of you thought that through. I think that'll work really well.
Hope so, that's the goal.
I don't think we have anyone signed up for public comment for this one, we didn't receive any public comments.
And I don't see any of the neighborhood residents in the room.
So you have nothing to rebut?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Are we ready to motion to close the public hearing?
I believe we probably are. Everyone feel okay with closing the public hearing?
Yes.
Will we get a motion to do that?
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second?
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing, all in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Alright, hearing is closed. Now we debate, discuss.
And on vacation requests, you don't have any particular criteria other than whether the conditions of approval appear to cover the needs associated with the request. So I'm, I'm happy to answer any procedural questions at this point. And of course, you have Bill Poncini available, but you are not bound to reference any particular criteria of approval on vacations at this time.
So I have a real quick question as part of my deliberation, Meredith. On page six, I, I believe it's the, yes, staff report. There are two items and it's clear to me what's in them and there's language like, a recommended motion would be moved to approve with the conditions of approval and direct staff to prepare findings with our, consistent with our deliberation, whatever that ends up. But as far as the conditions of approval that are in our packet from Planning and Zoning, that would be included, right, if we make a motion?
Yep.
Okay.
And is everyone comfortable with the conditions of approval? Both one, two, and through C?
I am.
Yeah, I think maintaining the public access is important and good.
Yeah, it seems to be pretty well thought out and vetted. So, if everyone's good, we should have a motion.
I move to approve vacation dash twenty-three dash oh-one with the P&amp;Z recommended conditions of, of approval and direct staff to pre, to prepare findings affecting conclusions of law consistent with the commission's deliberations.
Oh gosh, Councilmember Nelson, I'm so sorry, I gave you the wrong file number in your recommended motion in that staff report.
Okay.
So if you'd like to do an amended motion referencing VAC twenty-five oh-three, you may say so, moved.
What's twenty-five oh-one?
Twenty-five oh-three is the appropriate vacation number. VAC twenty-three oh-one is what Councilmember Nelson referenced.
Oh.
That's in our packet, yeah.
Twenty-five oh-one is the correct one.
Twenty-five oh-three.
Twenty-five oh-three? Okay.
Let me check my notes really quick.
I'll just read the first part again, I move to...
Let me check the number.
Twenty-five oh-three.
There we go.
In the, the reason, probably there's some confusion, is in the agenda, Agenda Bill we call it. It talks about twenty-five dash oh-one.
That's what it says on the agenda as well.
Yeah, but on the title page, it's twenty-five oh-three.
So if I noticed for twenty-five oh-three and agenda said twenty-five oh-one... So if I noticed for twenty-five oh three and Agenda said twenty-five oh one, referee.
Calling balls and strikes as usual. Boy, this one's been fun from start to finish.
The address and legal description are consistent.
Yeah, but the, what was it listed at with the P and Z commission?
Twenty-five, let me check. Twenty-five oh three.
It was twenty-five oh three with the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes.
But the notice that went out to the public was?
Notice went out to the public with twenty-five oh three. Agenda for city council was twenty-five oh one.
Just so we don't have any anomalies, what if we continued this to the next meeting and we could just have an appropriate agenda item and then we could vote at that meeting?
Okay.
Which will be available online. So you don't, if you're not up skiing.
You probably get the general sense of where it's going as well.
Yeah.
Okay. That works for me.
Okay.
Can make that happen pretty quickly, a week or two. Thanks, Russell. My bad.
So we need a motion to continue?
The, so we didn't have a second. We didn't have a second because we don't need the, the public hearing's closed. So just continue the deliberation and the agenda item to the next meeting.
I would make the motion to continue deliberation and make the motion at our next noticed meeting for VAC twenty-five dash oh three.
Second?
Yep.
Motion's been made and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote?
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilmember Giles?
Yes.
Mayor Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries.
Am I allowed to prepare a draft decision document to make up for any lost time or would that be presumptuous? Okay. I will do so.
Will that be a public hearing?
No.
Okay, onto our business agenda. And Meredith gets to stay right where she is.
Sure.
And talk to us about another P and Z recommendation.
Yes. So this one is not a public hearing as it is a final plat application that does not require any modification and is consistent with the preliminary plat. Mr. Beer is unable to be here tonight, but final plats are typically procedural in nature and I don't have any red flags to bring up tonight that would require dialogue between applicant and the council. So this application is for a one lot to two lot new subdivision final plat that is a remainder lot from previous subdivision with a larger parent lot that's been split back in the earlier twenty-twenty's. At their special meeting on November eighteenth, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a non-public hearing regarding this final plat application, took all of the evidence mostly from staff and the engineering staff at that time and determined that the request was consistent. And we have worked on a draft access easement for the properties to access through the Golden Glove Park parcel consistent with the other two properties that are just to the south here. That draft access easement would be placed on the council consent agenda at a future meeting to be finalized prior to a building permit being issued so that there is a formalized access for the resulting parcels. And then they're pretty close to final engineering approval with the Office of the City Engineer. There's just a couple of small tweaks to the locations of items on the digital plans before it can be recorded. But other than that, the plan in creating one more lot is for Mr. Beer to develop one more single-family home of a larger scale for his block of self-managed workforce housing. He asked to name his road initially Fairway Drive, but he decided instead to name it after his granddaughters. So one of his conditions of engineering approval is also to put up a private road sign along his easement so that the male knows how to get to him as well as EMS. I believe I got all of my application numbers consistent on this one within your agenda bill and packet. So with that, I can stand for any questions or comments.
So this is the garage ADU type of building that caught fire?
That would be the southerly parcel created out of this one. So currently on that site and it's the vacant space to the north that's also being created as a new parcel. So side by side, one more house.
So that portion towards Fairway Drive, that portion of what's been that lot, that's the new parcel that will be created and then they still have access on how they rebuilt that? They still have access to get in there and everything?
Correct.
So it's the point one-three, that's the vacant, that would be the vacant one right now?
Let me check my drawing.
Yeah, that's what she's saying. Point one-seven-nine has the existing structure on it.
Yes.
Is point one-three big enough to do anything without having to ask for a ton of variances and?
It is. Yeah, each zone's dimensional standards either track with that same size and dimensional speculation. And then there is a clause within the non-conforming section of code that allows for special alleviations in the event that you're too small to meet the base zoning. But this one does meet the base zoning in every dimension. So I think that they have an architect on board that's already got a design that fits.
Because that's R eight.
Yep.
Not if you had to put a septic system on there.
Yeah, we don't have to worry about that. I just don't want someone coming here, you know, just kind of with that, you know, we want to build a bigger house and you can't do it on this lot, so we want all these variances and setbacks and all that and everything. It's just, it's not.
No, I think if I were building a house, R eight is a pretty fun way to do it because you can still get pretty tall if you want and you can still have a lot of lot coverage and take up a lot of space. But you get to be right next to your neighbor.
And neither lot has access directly on the Davis. They go out.
Correct.
Past Golden Glove Park to Fair.
Correct. There's a deep drainage soil on that Davis side. So the engineer and Public Works Department preferred the easement over to the east side next to Golden Glove Park so that they wouldn't have to put more driveways on Davis.
Yeah.
So Meredith, on page three of the staff report talks about one of the conditions that came out of P and Z that's recommended is applicant shall provide proof of approval. So it's going to be on, like water and sewer district sewer.
Yep, so that condition is a pretty standard condition of subdivision plats. They have to sign all subdivision plats even if they don't have a septic system just to release the sanitary restrictions and allow them to connect to sewage or the water system.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions or comments? This one seems pretty straightforward.
I'm good to go on that.
You're into.
Make a motion?
Sure.
Okay, I move to recommend approval of FP dash twenty-five dash oh three with the P and Z recommended conditions of approval.
Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Mayor Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Thanks, Meredith.
See you later.
Yeah. Up next, is Nathan on?
Yep, he's on the screen.
All right. So Nathan, you're up next with the water treatment plant.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Nelson. City council, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
All right, so the agenda bill before you tonight follows council's direction from last week's work session where we had a very robust discussion about the high cost of bids received for our water treatment plant expansion project. In summary, the city conducted formal bidding during November and December. The bid opening was on December seventeenth, twenty twenty-five. And the city received six bids. However, as we discussed last week, two of the lowest bids were deemed non-responsive due to technical errors on their bid submitted forms. Therefore, and the attached letter dated January twentieth, twenty twenty-six from AE two S goes into better detail about the actual errors that were made. But staff's recommendation as well as AE two S, our engineer and design engineer that created the engineering estimate is to recommend that the council utilize their option to reject all bids and immediately rebid the project. We feel this positions the water department in the best position to receive a more favorable bid and work on financing this project so we can get it constructed. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Nathan?
I don't have any questions.
I don't either.
Thoroughly discussed this one. So we need a motion for that.
I move reject all bids received on twelve dash seventeen dash twenty-five for the water treatment plant capacity expansion project and authorize staff to work with AE two S to rebid the project immediately.
Second?
Motion's been made and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Giles?
Yes.
Mayor Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
Okay, the motion carries. Thank you, Nathan.
Thank you. I'll have you know that the bids, the rebid process isn't worked and we're hoping to have a bid opening in early February or mid-February. And I look forward to bringing those results to the council.
Appreciate your work on this one.
Yeah.
Up next, we have Michelle to talk about our comprehensive plan.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council. This is Michelle Grunavell, Community and Economic Development Director. The item in front of you this evening is a contract. It's an update to the McCall Comprehensive Plan, the Transportation Master Plan and the Design Guidelines. This is a contract between the city of McCall and Logan Simpson. And just to remind you, this is your third touch on the item. So as you remember, we, at the last meeting, we looked at the top ranking proposal and that's a team led by Logan Simpson, but it also includes Kittleson and Associates cross-current collective, Eco Northwest and Kushlin and Associates. So what you have in front of you tonight is a standard contract that's been reviewed by our city attorney and everybody agrees to the terms. It also is, in attachment A, there is a scope of work which pulls out sort of the process and the elements of the plan. We went over this with our team internally as well as with our consultants, made a number of modifications and ultimately feel comfortable, I think everybody felt comfortable with the scope of work. Attachment B is the cost breakdown of the project. And then attachment C is the tentative timeline and the breakdown of that process. So one change, since this did go out to all of you, in order to be more explicit about our Blue Cross of Idaho grant, we wanted to add, add in, I think on page four, yeah, on page four, there's a bulleted point that talks about culture and public health. And we wanted to add in a sentence that when we look at all of the different topic areas, we'll be looking through the lens of health and wellness. So that's part of the evaluation process and part of kind of the terms of that grant. Similarly, we will want to also meet with the Community Health Board as part of this process. So those are just two things that weren't explicitly called out. We actually talked about them internally and intend to do those things, but thought it might be good to actually add that specific language into this scope of work. And I'm happy to answer any questions. We have Kelly from Logan Simpson online. And I believe Diane is also in the audience.
She sure is. Do we have any questions from Michelle on this one?
I'm just happy to hear the inclusion of the health language to it. You know, ultimately that is the end result of all of this is we create both a quality of life and a healthy life. So I think that's a positive. And in thinking then of the Blue Cross Foundation's contribution for grant, once we award a contract, does that kind of terminate the possibility to get any future grants? Or if you look at this size of money and the, the, what I would anticipate to be is kind of a model way to approach city visioning and design. And is there anybody else who, I mean, are there any opportunity? Oh, looking at Delta James right now. Anyhow, it's just kind of interesting to me to think if that, when you award it, doesn't matter, we'll award it, that dead ends or there's still grant opportunity?
Yeah, I don't know if Delta's walking up to the podium, but we're always looking for grant opportunities. So I think, you know, any additional funds we can bring to this process, the better. You know, the end result of this process at this point is a major public involvement process. And then out of that comes three distinctive plans. You know, depending on our funding, we may see actually maybe four. So I think the more money we can bring to the table, even as we kick off this process, we can go back and amend the contract if we want to add additional work and scope of work. So we actually did that our last comp plan process. We ended up amending it because we started realizing that we needed some more specific planning work on a certain topic area. So we were able to go back to the council and amend that. So we're excited to get started on this and we feel like we have a good process and a good budget to do some meaningful work here.
Delta, did you want to add anything to the respondent Lyle's question or?
Thank you, mayor and council. I'm Delta James, Economic Development Planner. And as you know, I write and administer most of the grants for the city of McCall. We cannot seek funding for retroactive work. Just because we're entering into a contract, I think actually strengthens any possible grant funding sources. But most sources, the timeline for implementation between application and implementation is so long that we'll be well into the project by the time any additional grant funds would be awarded. However, if we do see grant opportunities come up, of which one we are currently tracking, that may provide the opportunity to add scope of service to this base contract, then it would be a contract amendment and work that hadn't already started yet. And that could be funded to help make the planning process just that much more robust. If that answers your question?
It does.
Okay.
I see that the community will be celebrating from April to June of twenty twenty-seven. That's a lot of celebrating.
We need more celebrating, believe me.
Any other questions, comments? We've been over this a few times. Well, if everyone is good with it, can we get a motion on it?
I make a motion to approve the contract for the McCall Comprehensive Plan, Transportation Plan and Design Guidelines between the Logan Simpson and the city of McCall and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. Second?
Motion has been made and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Mayor Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries and we will be on our way with updating our comprehensive plan and transportation and all the fun stuff. plan and transportation and all the fun stuff. I think there's many interested parties out there in the community already. Michelle is up again, uh, for an interagency agreement for building services.
Great, thank you. Um, so this item is, was a request from Valley County, um, to have our building department continue building services in terms of inspections and then, um, completing certificates of, certificates of occupancy, um, for people who submitted building permits prior to January one of this year. Um, and these would be the projects that are located in the former McCall Impact area. Um, so we evaluated this at the staff level and felt like, uh, there was a number of benefits in continuing to provide the service, um, for the county, um, primarily sort of the ease to, to the public and to the applicants that have already started this process. Um, so basically what this agreement does is it, it provides authority, um, for city staff, um, to operate in that former impact area, which is now Valley County. Um, and then it provides the terms in which, um, we would do those inspections and, and finish out that building permit process. Ultimately, this agreement runs until January one, um, two thousand and twenty-seven.
So Michelle, it would be, um, it's one year, and it would be helpful to the people that have filled out all the paperwork and started down that road. So there'd be an advantage to them too, as well as the county.
Yeah, abso- absolutely.
Seemed like-
We have people- Oh, sorry, go ahead.
I was saying, it seemed like your staff really thought wisely on that, um, thinking about our constituents, the people that are, that are caught in this transition, you might say.
Yeah, um, we do have some people that are actually ready to go with inspections already because we had basically from January one until this date, um, because we received this agreement, um, pretty late in the process. But we have people kind of queued up, ready to keep, um, working on their projects, so we want to be able to provide that service so they can keep going. Um, we will be, we've been communicating regularly with all of those permit holders to let them know kind of what is happening and, and what is being proposed. And then ultimately, you know, we will be communicating with them as we get closer to that date so that everybody knows that there is a deadline, um, at which, you know, they really should try to seek completion. Um, and then we'll outline what the process is for them to, to finish out their projects.
Thanks. Um, I think that's very wise. Thanks for bringing that to us.
Michelle, uh, just roughly, but how many projects are there that are continuation in the previous impact? Are we looking at five projects or twenty-five?
Actually, I think we have about sixty active permits.
Oh, yeah.
So-
Pass it on.
Yeah, so that's, um, you know, that can be kind of small projects or new construction.
Yeah, a lot of it. It, it appears to me.
Yeah.
That's a lot of continuation. Okay, thanks.
At least we're able to provide one little bit of consistency in the mad, mixed-up world here.
And people have paid their fees already to the city for those projects, so that makes it more complicated if you were to try and hand it off.
So on that point first, I had a question because you do have the funding, um, provision here that, you know, fees were paid to the city. City gets to keep all the fees for all the services performed. Um, what happens if on January first, twenty twenty-seven, there are still some outstanding applications that the county will have to administer?
We'll have to evaluate that once we get a little closer and see how far along they are in their projects. Um, the goal was to try to get people, um, as far along in the process as possible so that we're minimizing any transfer of, of permits. It just gets pretty complicated.
Yeah.
Um, and there's a lot of administration associated with that.
So the idea would be is you might have to refund some fees if the county took over a portion of, of the administering the, uh, application?
Yeah, I think it ultimately will depend on how far along they are in the process, if we've expended those funds or not, um, and how we want to deal with it. Um, I think for now, we're gonna try to shoot, to try to get as many of those done as possible, and then we'll ju- just need to evaluate sort of what projects are left where they're at and what makes the most sense moving forward. We thought this was just a way to, to, um, outline specific sort of authority and conditions for the near term. Sorry, I don't really have a definitive answer on that. I mean, other, other than I, like I said, I, I think we really need to evaluate once we get closer to that date.
Yeah, I think that's wise. We got options. Um, if, for example, we get forty projects done and the, the remaining twenty are almost done, then we have options. Such as extending it for another three months or six months or not refunding the money. But I think this is a good way to get going, and hopefully we'll have a lot of cooperation, and most of those projects will get completed.
Bill, do you have anything to add or any concerns?
No, I don't. Michelle covered it very well. Thank you.
And the board of commissioners are on board with this agreement?
It's my understanding that they've already signed it.
Okay, great.
Yeah, I have it right.
Excellent. Are we ready then? Can I make a motion?
Yes.
I'm, uh, make the motion to, to approve the interagency agreement for building services between City of McCall and Valley County.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilmember Giles?
Yes.
Mayor Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries. Thanks for the work on that, Michelle.
Thank you.
Up next, we have the McCall Ave. Bree, are you gonna lead us in this one, or?
Sure, there's not-
There's, we've got both Michelle and you on here, so.
Yeah, it's like, I know there's not much to talk about now. Um, just going back to the V two lease, did you all receive that earlier? Oh, this is Bree Zach, sorry. Housing Program Manager. Did you all receive the original lease?
Yes.
Cool. Yeah, so I guess it's up to you guys if you want to discuss or want to approve or disapprove.
So-
And I might just, just add that, you know, typically in the past, when you were approving, um, the assignment of the lease and the new leases, that when it's under the V two, it's just under the consent agenda, so it's a relatively straightforward administrative function.
Correct. Any other discussion on this? I think we've all feeling okay?
Right, I think we're just approving the V two.
Correct.
So the-
The assignment of-
This, yeah, it's like the assignment paper or the assignment document that you all received in your packet is accurate minus there's a switch from the V three to the V two. Um, but then the ground lease itself is the same as it has been.
So your motion would be to approve the assignment of the existing lease of fifteen forty-three McCall Avenue from Kimberly and Adams at the time of closing for Greystone Village, blah, 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 and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents. So it's just that first part that you'll just-
Changing termination to assignment.
Yes.
I'll make the motion to approve assignment of the existing lease of fifteen forty-three McCall Avenue from Kimberly and Adams at the time of closing for Greystone Village number three, lot four, block three, fifteen forty-three McCall Avenue to Drew Allen Seeley, and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Mayor Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Giles?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries, and Bree and Michelle, thanks for your work on this, and council, thanks for the thoughtful discussion. Um, I think it probably, uh, opened up some good discussion points for future housing plans.
Oh, yeah. We got lots to discuss, so. See you guys later. Thank you.
Thank you, Bree.
Thank you, Bree.
Okay, up next, Delta for grant.
Thank you, Mayor, Council, Delta James Economic Development Planner. I have, um, three grants, um, applications for your consideration this evening. The first is a request to approve submittal of a cutthroat place, plate grant application to support the Dine Hard River Access improvements. Um, you're likely familiar with this project as I brought forward two application requests to you last year for the same project. Um, unfortunately, we were not successful at that time. Um, the project has been scaled back a little bit by our Parks Director, and we will be, uh, reapplying, um, to the cutthroat plate grant application opportunity, um, exclusively to an amount not to exceed ten thousand dollars. The total project cost, um, as defined as the first phase is now in the sixty-five thousand dollar range, just over that. Um, a draft budget has been provided in your packet. It generally will make the most, the riverfront, um, improvements solely, which will provide and improve the non-motorized and fishing access to the river itself, as well as accomplish some of the bank stabilization goals associated with the parcel. Um, so that's the first step. As you know, the greater vision, um, and it is shown in the exhibit there, is for some parking lot improvements, picnic area, et cetera, et cetera. That's not part of this request. Um, this first phase at sixty-five thousand dollars would be supported hopefully by this grant application, but there have also been funds dedicated through Blue Cross, and I think that's the mayor's block challenge. Thank you, Mayor, former mayor, excuse me. Um, and, um, uh, uh, ten thousand dollars and a little bit from the Parks and Recs operation budget, which they had already planned as part of capital improvements moving forward.
Thanks for passing along that thing. So I wanted to counsel to know, Blue Cross has been very generous. Some of it has to do with the mayor's walking challenge. That was only a thousand dollars. The other two grants that we talked about today, tonight, that we are talking about, one is for twenty thousand dollars, and that's in this one, and the twenty-five thousand that goes to comp planning. Those are a result of our city manager, Forrest Atkinson, attending the meetings with me, and so we were both graduates of that academy. Um, some of you may remember Mayor Jackie went to that same academy years ago, and so that's how we got the twenty thousand dollars, and then the twenty-five was extra. Delta did all the work on both of those grants and applied timely, and so Blue Cross was very generous to us this year at the foundation.
Well, hopefully IDPR will be generous to us this year.
That's right.
We hope, we hope they will. I think they will with that much leverage and, you know, and other people contributing. So thank you, um, Delta.
Thank you for the clarification, counselor.
Make the motion to approve submittal of a cutthroat license plate grant application and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilmember Giles?
Yes.
Mayor Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
That motion carries, and on to the next grant application.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a request, um, to approve submittal of a certified local government grant application, um, to the Idaho State Historical Society. Um, they administer federal funds that are geared toward preservation and, and surveying of, uh, potentially or identified historic buildings or properties. Um, the City of McCall's Historic Preservation Commission is eligible for this grant program because they are a certified local government entity, which requires, um, application and accreditation on, um, an every other year basis, um, which I helped them do, and it really is a testament to the expertise that we have on that volunteer board, that we're allowed to be eligible for this grant program. Um, the Historic Preservation Commission at their last meeting unanimously requested the, um, approval to submit this grant application in an amount up to ten thousand dollars to support the continuing work that they've been doing to identify our local historic resources. Attached in your plan is what was accomplished last year, um, through the same grant funds, and it, um, allowed for the Historic Preservation Commission to work with an architectural historian to do what's called a windshield survey of, um, our community, which really means he didn't come here, he did work through Google Earth and looking at, um, what's available publicly in records and historic photos to begin to identify the, um, and prioritize the areas of town that should be looked at more closely moving forward. And not surprisingly, um, in the plan, it really articulates, um, the, the process of looking at our downtown core first, the original, um, downtown core, and then moving outward from there. So, um, if we are successful with this grant application, it would allow for continued work with this, um, same consultant who would then come to town and get eyes on the priority properties, which are primarily along, um, East Lake Street and extending kind of in that area as, as build-out occurred. Um, beyond, so we, what could come out of this would be identifying which of those properties still have historic integrity enough to perhaps be eligible for the National Register of Historic Places, but also it may identify properties that perhaps are not to that level but could be of local historic significance and would warrant some sort of interpretive signage or other recognition as having local historic significance. Um, an added benefit to doing this work is that it, um, streamlines the cultural process for any sort of work in the adjacent, like, construction work in the adjacent right-of-way that's required through the NEPA Environmental Review Clearance. So, um, it would give us a leg up on, say, if we were to move forward with sidewalks continuing along, um, East Lake Street or improvements that kind of are coming out of the planning process on the greater scale of our, um, our road network.
Great. Thanks for bringing that to us. Another, another great opportunity. We have a good chance, don't you think, on this one?
We are, um, one of a handful of certified local government historic preservation commissions, so, um, however, there is not a lot of funds, um, in this program. There are federal funds that have been significantly reduced, um, this year, so we shall see.
All right, can we get a motion on this one?
I move to approve submittal of a certified local government grant application and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
Councilmember Giles?
Yes.
Mayor Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
All right, thanks, Delta, and one more.
Yeah. Um, as a closing note on, on that last one, thank you for the approval. Um, I hope you did get a chance to look at some of the information in the packet. There's some interesting, um, documentation of like the A-frame houses that were built in the sixties and how they were advertised, and it's been really fun to learn that, and now you'll notice them around town. There are a few.
Mayor, can I respond to that in Delta's comment? You know, I did look through that, and then I thought back, you know, what, what is, of course, some of those I watched get built, but, uh, then you kind of think, what is the significance of this and the energy we put in this? And my takeaway from that was, I'm more dear to my town when I look at that, and I think of those things, and it goes, yeah, there's living history which brings something, brings some kind of spirit out of the community. So anyhow, I think it's, uh, many people will find the same thing, and they'll take a greater deal of pride and care and commitment to McCall because of that work.
Thanks. And those A-frame houses, um, were, were for vacation homes, but also as a workforce, um, housing project done by the Brown Tie Lumber Company. Um, so we have a, a history there of workforce housing demonstrated in some kind of interesting, um, advertisements of, of the time. Okay. Anyway, um, the, the next and final grant, um, that I'd like your approval to submit is for another license plate, um, funded project. This is for the Wild Rivers Plate Fund. This is administered through Idaho Department of Commerce, um, and it specifically funds projects that provide education and encouragement to enjoy-
Idaho's, um, whitewater rivers. Um, the McCall Parks and Recreation Department would like to seek up to five thousand dollars from this program for, to support design and installation of educational signage at the Dine Hard River Access Point. Um, that signage might include things about downriver, um, takeout opportunities, as well as, um, best practices for responsible recreation and water quality information, as well as, um, fishing opportunities at this site in partnership with Fish and Game.
Would it have anything to say, make sure you stay the river left once you get the Black Hawk and avoid lock jams at all costs?
Yeah, I'm sure it could.
Delta, is this the same location as the other Dine Hard?
Yes.
That's great.
Yes, it, it is all at the Dine Hard River Access Point, which is just there at the north side of the Dine Hard Bridge.
That'll be really helpful.
Give all sorts of recommendations for river etiquette.
Yeah, hi, history on the, um, Stock Steelhead and Cascade Reservoir that go up the north fork would be interesting, too. Yeah, there's some good opportunities with this. Thanks for your work.
And, and I should note that Fish and Game is a partner in this effort to, um, improve the Dine Hard River Access. They have pledged twenty-five thousand dollars to the, um, site improvements that we've talked about previously.
That's significant, yeah.
Yeah, that's good stuff. Yeah, make the motion to approve submittal of a Wild Rivers grant application and authorize the mayor to sign all necessary documents.
Second.
Uh, motion has been made and seconded. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Machesek?
Yes.
Councilmember Giles?
Yes.
Mayor Nielsen?
Yes.
Councilmember Nelson?
Yes.
Councilmember Thrower?
Yes.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Any parting thoughts?
Just one to me, actually. I think all the opportunities we have for education to let people know how fragile the environment is, how much the different things we do steps on it, is, uh, something that we need to th- take advantage of every opportunity. Everywhere where there's users, I mean, the lake, the rivers, trailheads, so I, I'm really keen on thinking that is part of our environmental stewardship. Education, it goes a long ways, along, in addition to enforcement and those other kinds of measures.
Agreed. Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
Continued hard work on being this great grants.
Thank you, Mayor.
Delta, one thing we know for sure, we ask you hard questions like what are our chances? And our chances are something if we approve these grants going forward, you know, apply. So thanks for giving our encour- you know, encouraging us. We have a very good track record.
Well, I can't wait if you don't play, right?
Okay, Meredith is, uh, for appoint, appointment.
Yes. So before you, for your last agenda bill or second to last item tonight, um, we have a request to appoint Lauren DeMoe as, um, the new fifth city resident to the freshly born City of McCall Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, last week at their January meeting, as they are reauthorized to exist, um, the Planning and Zoning Commission interviewed and reviewed the one letter of interest in serving on the Planning and Zoning Commission from a qualified city resident. Ms. DeMoe owns Salmon Raft and has undergone the, um, planning and zoning process via design review by FIRE, um, earlier when they, um, were constructing their main headquarters for Salmon Raft. Um, she also has, um, a history of having her parents, both are architects, and having a big interest in design while running her, um, business in the community, and understands various public permitting systems, as well as having been a participant in our own. Um, the commission feels that she makes up a well-rounded, um, aspect that the commission doesn't currently have. They have backgrounds in finance, they have backgrounds in policy, they have backgrounds in real estate, um, but they don't feel that they have, um, enough focus on either the experience of young parents in McCall integrated with the urban fabric of our community or business owners yet. Um, so they think that she would bring, um, a well-roundedness to the commission that they currently don't have. Um, she sends her regards but could not be here tonight as she was on childcare duty, but she does promise to have her Tuesdays, the first Tuesday each month, available for the commission duties. Um, but she wanted to let her husband play hockey this evening, so, um, she said she wished she could be here, but I came in her stead.
So really nice, um, letter of application.
It is, yeah.
I would enthusiastically make the motion to appoint Lauren DeMoe to a three-year term of service on the Planning and Zoning Commission, expiring January twenty-second of twenty twenty-nine.
Second.
That motion has been enthusiastically made and seconded. Do we need a roll call vote on this one, or is this a voice vote situation? Just your voice vote.
Yeah.
Trying to feel it out. So, all who are enthusiastically in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries, yeah. I think she'll be a great addition to the PNC.
And she will receive her customary volunteer socks in her welcome package.
She is honestly a hard worker and on her, uh, letters or her resume, she has thirty-five hours per week, six days per week to be the coxswain for the, uh, rowing team. That's a lot, that's a lot of athletic output.
All right, um, looks like we're on to our upcoming meeting.
Mayor Council, Bessie Jo Wagner, City Clerk. Um, some more things have populated, um, your meeting calendar. Um, on the next meeting for, uh, well, I'll just step back for a second. January twenty-eighth is the retreat. We'll have an agenda out next, uh, hopefully on Monday or Tuesday for that. Um, again, that will be at the Glass House on January twenty-eighth. Um, and then January twenty-ninth, I have three of you attending the city official's day at the Capitol. Um, and then, uh, February fifth, uh, is still the Liberty Fest Planning Discussion. And then on February twelfth, um, we have a lease hanger that will, or a hanger lease that has been added. It has also been added a letter, um, on the proposed Red Ridge Development, um, and a, uh, Valley County Roads and Bridge Department Grant Application Letter of Support, um, and a request, uh, to deliberate the vacation that you discussed this evening. And then we have the CUP, the, uh, the middle school expansion request got rescheduled to the February twenty-sixth meeting. I think those are the main, uh, changes that are coming up the soonest. Is there anything that any of you would like to see coming up on the schedule?
No? Full schedule?
Yeah, it's pretty full schedule. And just a reminder that in March, you only have one regular meeting on March twelfth, uh, because of spring break. So you do have a, a tentative special meeting on March ninth, and then your March second meeting will be April second.
Will make up for the ten meetings we're having in January.
Yeah, because you'll have five in April.
All right, anything else, or can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
In favor?
Aye.
Aye. Right, thanks, everybody.
Wow, we're also, also setting a new precedent. We didn't have a, a executive session.
Yeah, that's only seven thirty.
Thank you, Bill.
Yeah, no, no offense, but we're happy to not have the executive session.
Um, Bill?
Yeah.
In this right here, they, um, they're missing a word. Right here, the parties agree the city. So I looked through the whole, I meant to do this earlier and I didn't have a chance, but I looked through the whole document. Everything is absolutely spot on, except for that, that word, "agree." It is not there.
This is fine. Let's just sign it as it is.
It's, it's not enough to, okay, I didn't know if that word was-
Well, I mean-
Significant enough to-
No, to derail.
Ask them to give me a new page?
I don't think so.
Okay.
We're not gonna get in a fight over this, I don't think.
Okay. It's, it seems odd because it's like they just copy pasted it, so, I don't know. Thank you, oh, here.
See if we can get that copy transferred so that we're able to, you know, run them around the campus and not have-
Mistakes were made. I want to tell you, we haven't taken a historical tour of the city of Spokane and learned about the history of the series-